Anyone out in the audience, if you would like to sign, if you'd like to speak for or against anything that's going to be on our agenda tonight, be sure and go back and sign in, so you'll be recognized, won't miss you.
Yes, sir.
Yes. There should be one for each thing on the agenda back there. So if you want to sign for or against, speak for or against anything on the agenda, be sure and sign in. We're going to wait a minute or so, to wait on our lawyer, he's on his way. And so, let's give him a couple of minutes here, and then we'll get started.
Your past, you look at it just on your phone? You looked at it on your phone in the past?
It's just been on here, but we can't scroll it ourselves.
Yeah. Yeah.
We tell you to try to pull up the tax records and all too, kind of get them, the lights.
How you doing?
She was not two months ago.
No, I didn't.
This here, hi.
On the gas station?
Yeah, that's not here, sir.
There he is. Yeah, like you in a hurry, buddy.
He's always in a hurry.
Yes, sir. Yes.
At this time, I would like to call the monthly meeting of the Boarding's Order, Boarding's Order of Appeals to order at this time, and we'll get started. Is everybody signed in that wants to speak tonight? Be sure and sign in, so we can be recognized. We should be able to get the first sheet here. Okay, our first item on the agenda is variance. Application number 24-16V. Chris Robinson owner, 107 Houston Street, parcel 11303027, located in land lot 158 of the 3rd Land District, requesting a reduction of a front setback from 100 feet to 35. Is the applicant present? All right, so would you step forward to the microphone up there, please, and state your name, your address?
My name's Chris Robinson. Address 508 Desert Willow Circle, Lucas Grove, Georgia, 30248.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead and tell us about your application.
So, I bought the lot to build a house on it. There was already a house there. And I tore it down to build a new one. And before I did all of that, I went to the building department to make sure that it could be done. And, you know, got my surveys and all that good stuff. And they told me everything I needed to do to obtain the permit, and I did everything. And once I got everything submitted to them, they come back and rejected, and said that with the R1 zoning, I had to be 100 foot back. And the lot is, is only like 100 and maybe, yeah, it's a non-conforming lot. So it's, I believe the whole entire lot is only like 125 foot deep, so there's no way that that could possibly happen, that you could build it 100 foot back from the front.
Okay.
And the original house that was there, I'm basically putting it back in the same exact spot.
Okay. You said you were told that you could build a house back?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I went through the whole process. I had to get, I had to, well, actually, my surveyor here helped me out with that. He had to re-deed the area, I don't know, whatever, I don't know much about it. Yeah, there was an alleyway, they were saying that also, when they rejected the permit, they said that I had to have the driveway where it's not encroaching into someone else's property, and it's not a driveway, it's a deeded alleyway. So, yeah, I don't know.
You have a deeded driveway to that? Or documentation as far as an easement through there?
Yes, sir, I've got everything here. I've got the survey, I've got, you want it?
If you will give him that, and then if you will step back, because people watching, they can't hear you.
And also, we need a recording for the record too, please.
So, back in 1972, somebody subdivided that area and turned it into a subdivision. And that's the new survey and the utility easement, to be able to run water down the easement.
Okay, any questions for for the applicant from the board? You want to look at these?
I have, I have three concerns, I guess. Number one, has, has a perk test been done on this lot? Because-
I've already got the septic permit.
You got the septic turn.
Yeah, I went through the whole process, because they told me I could build a house there.
Because I know where most of, it's like, most of the lot is on floodplain.
Right, yeah, I have to do, I have to do an Elgin system. And I've got a secondary system plotted out too, or mapped out.
And then I know, looking at the staff report, it also looks like there will be a side reduction setback that is needed, which will be a second variance, is that correct?
Yes.
And then third concern, so, is the driveway? So who owns the land that the driveway is on? Do we know the answer to that question?
Are you referring to the gravel driveway, or the Sims alley?
So the driveway that gives access to this lot? Because it looks like, according to the records here, it looks like it cuts through someone else's land.
Yeah, so if you look at the pictures I provided you of the site itself, I don't know if this was storm damage or what, but this Sims alley portion, it looks like it's completely blocked by vegetation. You do have the gravel slash dirt drive that goes back to that property. But you're right, it does, it kind of hugs Sim Alley to some degree, then it cuts across the track owned by Mr. Horstman, looks like.
The new survey provided, it doesn't do that. It doesn't cut into the other property.
Is Sims Alley drivable?
Yes, yes, I actually put gravel, I redid the whole driveway, or the whole alleyway, and cleaned it all up, because you're right. Supposedly, they told me the reason why I had to do the variance is because the property should have been labeled as a, I can't, it was either a T-25 or a T-23. When the tornado come through, supposedly somebody came in and tagged all of the houses and properties that got affected by the tornadoes, and somehow this one fell through the cracks. It's the only house on Houston Street that got affected by the tornado, and trees fell through the house. And that's the reason why I went ahead and tore it down. I actually come up here to try to get a demo permit, and they told me, don't worry about it, because I showed them photos of the property and everything, and they said, no demo permit was needed. They told me, I was, went ahead and tore it down.
So that's the new survey?
Yes, sir.
Has that been recorded? Has that been recorded yet?
You did record it, I believe. Pretty sure it has been.
Is this grandfathered back?
Mr. Hardwick, it's a pre-existing lot of record.
Meaning? It is?
The answer's yes, I'm sorry, it's a pre-existing lot of record.
Okay.
Meaning the area and the width are not changing, will not be held against them in terms of building a house?
Right.
But setbacks are not part of that grandfathering. Come up to modern setbacks, house size, things of that nature. So I do agree that, that the lot itself is not the issue, the width, the area of it. But as I said in the staff report, there's, and I don't necessarily have a problem with reducing the setback, because I get it, the lot is very shallow, you can't have 100 foot setback off that to begin with. So I don't have a problem with that. The problem is, even if y'all approve that front setback reduction, it doesn't solve the other problems that I outlined in the staff report. The driveway as it was shown in the application, and then you have part of it, the house, the grating, the deck of the new house is going to be encroaching in that floodplain, so.
So I'll take the deck out, and I think that was the only piece that was touching the floodplain, so I can remove that deck from the drawings and, or, you know, from the permit, I mean, the drawings that I submit for the permit.
I noticed you got a finished floor elevation on there of 828.76, how'd you arrive at that elevation?
I'm a surveyor, and I carry elevations.
We need your name and address.
Jonathan Douglas, Douglas Consulting LLC. Address is 248 Gilliam Court, Lucas Grove.
I need to check our ordinance, but a lot of other ordinances, you gotta have a, you establish a, for lots where you have floodplain, you establish a elevation line of the floodplain where it would be, and you would have to come up with your finished floor of the house, at least three feet above that, just to make sure it doesn't flood. Is this going to be a slab or crawl space?
Crawl space.
Okay. So essentially, the top of your crawl space, start of the floor, would have to be at least three feet above what you established as the elevation line of that floodplain right there was closest point. I'm sure you've done that kind of work before.
Yes, sir.
I just need to double check the ordinance, make sure it's three feet. Most times it is, sometimes it's like one, but judging how close it is to where you want to build a house, I'd say, yeah, at least three. And as good as the crawl space, not a slab, so.
The footprint of the new house is pretty much exactly where the old, the existing house was before it was demoed.
Okay, now, that's something we didn't touch on before, I don't think, when I was reviewing this. With the zoning it is, it needs to be a certain, you'd have to come up to the modern standard of the house size, which I need to go back and look. What was the heated square footage on the house you're trying to rebuild?
I can't remember.
Okay. I think that is the case for the R1, I believe, I'll have to go back and check, but. So there again, I don't know about this new survey, but if it's, you know, if it shows the driveway now not cutting across that lot that day.
That's true, it's not cutting across the lot.
Okay. Were you, I saw this, but this is just a septic, is that the new plat you were showing around too? Or that's just a septic plan?
It's the septic plan and septic permit.
Okay, so y'all don't have a copy of that new survey, or whatever?
I believe it was, I just, it's going around. It should be going around.
I put that last page on the first stack I handed you. I don't know that it showed the driveway on.
Oh, okay, yeah. So this is more of a-
It was a site plan, because it's got erosion control on it and everything as well, but.
Okay. So if Sims Alley is now drivable, no trees in the way and all that, then that would alleviate that concern I had with the driveway situation too. We might be able to work out something too with the floodplain elevation as well. So really, it gets back to the heart of the matter, the front setback reduction that he's asking for. I don't have a problem with that, but what I wanted to avoid was, if y'all approved that, and he thought everything else was fine, and there's some issues that need to be worked out, so.
Okay, this, this side elevation that goes into the floodplain here, he is not grandfathered back to encroach on that, am I correct in that?
No, sir, no. He'd have to, we'd have to come up with an elevation we were just talking about, and have the floor elevation of the house at least a certain, several feet above that, to make sure the-
I'm pretty sure it's at least three foot, it's maybe even three and a half foot higher than the elevation.
Is there a side that they have to be X amount from that floodline?
A setback?
Yes.
I will double check that too. There's a state waters buffer that they're not encroaching on, that's on that plan as well, in the bottom left corner. But I'll check the floodplain line, it's mainly an elevation thing. But taking off that deck would probably help as well.
Okay. David, can we go ahead with this, or do we need to table this? Do you find out some of these figures and get some more information? How's the best way to handle this?
Really, all you're considering on the thing is the reduction of that front setback variance. So you do have enough information to proceed on with that, in my view.
Okay, but with the understanding though, that he's still going to have to come back and get a side setback variance there also, correct?
It's up to the attorney, but y'all could go ahead and address that as well.
You've had it advertised for a variance of another one already, Mr. Hardwick. We have allowed people to get multiple variances. The, what is the sides, the side setback variance would be what?
I believe it's 25. However, did you mention there's going to be a water line going down, or is there going to be a well?
It's a water line, yes, sir.
Okay. There is a provision in the code where that is, can be reduced to 12 feet. 12, right there. Where public waters provided, the side of the yard setback can be 12 feet. So he's not, actually has an issue there, since he has water. I was not sure if it was going to be a well or public water. Since it's public water, as you're saying, it could be 12 feet. So that's no longer an issue.
Yeah, we've already paid for the water meter, isn't that correct?
No, they, they, I went ahead and opened the account. They told me to go ahead and open the account and everything, but I wouldn't pay for the actual meter until the permit was issued.
But it's definitely not going to be a well.
Correct, no, there's no well.
All right, so that, that's not an issue there, that, that side setback can be 12 feet. And actually, I would recommend, since that's going to be 12 and not the 20 you have there, to shift it up eight feet, and let's get some more wiggle room with that, the floodplain, so.
I might can actually get that deck in there then.
Possibly.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, do we have anybody to speak for or against this?
Mr. Chair, they have both spoken.
Okay. Okay, then we will entertain the motion from staff concerning application 24-16V.
So again, let me reiterate, as far as the front setback variances you had before you, notwithstanding the other issues, we will work out. I did not have a problem with the front setback, just the front setback variance. And I would just have one condition, that approval of the front setback reduction does not imply approval of variances from, for access and flood protection requirements. I think we can work those out in the next few days or week or so, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the front setback reduction.
Okay. Do we need to make any kind of a notation concerning that, and our recommendation on that, about that there might be other things down line?
I think I pretty much just did, when I worded the approval condition. I think it pretty much covers it. So if you want to, if y'all choose to approve it, and mention my listed approval condition, I think that'll have it covered.
Okay. Well then, I will entertain a motion concerning application number 24-16V.
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions recommended by staff.
Okay. We have a, Patricia's second.
Second motion.
We have a motion as second, all in favor, would you raise your right hand, please? All right, sir. Did you understand that there still might be some other stuff that has to be cleared prior to this? That this is not the complete authorization here? Even though we approved the 100 foot setback going to the 35 that you asked?
Yes, sir.
I'll get with you in the next few days on the floodplain, what needs to happen there. It's mainly construction plan stuff now, since you got the setback variance, so, yeah.
Got you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Robinson. The next item on our agenda is variance application number 24-17V. Terry Ellington owner, 140 Loop Drive, parcel 24, uh, 26, pardon, let me start over, 26401008K, located in land lot 22 of the 4th District, representing, requesting a reduction in the lot size from five acres to three in the AR2 zoning district. Is the applicant present? All right, sir, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Terry Ellington. And I currently live in the city of McDonough, 5015 Anastasia, which is about a block behind the courthouse. Been there for almost 21 years. And I'm here before this board tonight to ask for a variance about, oh, I guess, well over a year ago. My wife and I decided that we'd like to move out of the city. And in doing so, we started looking and wound up that my son-in-law and daughter had acquired a parcel of land and had built a house, and it's nearing completion. And a three acre tract next to their property was offered to us by my son-in-law's mother, which is known as 140 Loop Drive. After we did some due diligence work and all, we made the decision that we would like to be neighbors. And we purchased the land this past July, the three acre tract, from Virginia Rogers. And it closed, and it's now ours. We started the process about, maybe three weeks or so after the purchase of the land, to obtain the permits to build. We have a driveway permit in place, we have the, I believe it's the EPA certification and septic tank permit in hand, and have applied for the building permit in order to start the house. And we based a lot of our decision on a recorded plat that's on the screen, that took place in '22, accepted by the county planning department, and was recorded, I think, about two days later in March of that year, on, in the deed books and all, was filed in county. And then, in the process of seeking the permit to build, it came to our knowledge that we were in a district, I believe, if I understand it correctly, that requires five acres in order to build a house. And that information was not part of our decision process. We didn't know that. And working off of the, again, the plat that's listed there on the screen. So I'm here to ask this board for a variance in order to allow us to build a house, our new home, on that three acre tract, and be neighbors to our son-in-law and daughter. I'll try to answer any questions that anybody might have.
I think I read somewhere in the, in the request that you had tried to buy some additional acreage.
There was two options that was presented to me in conversation with Mr. Allen. I don't know, a few days after I filed all the paperwork and what was needed to get the permit. Um, I don't know, a few days after I filed all the paperwork and what was needed to get the permit. And, uh, the purchase of two additional acres wouldn't work. There is, uh, a lake i- in that little curve on the plat. And, um, so it, that, it's not the opportunity to go that way and ask Ms. Rogers for some more land. And then if I asked my son-in-law to sell me a couple acres of him, his, I don't know what that would do for him. Um, because he owns a five acre tract in their new house next door. So option two, which was to ask for a variance. Uh, seemed to be the best option for my wife and myself in, in order to build a home.
Okay.
So I'm humbly asking the board for the variance.
Okay. Uh, any questions from the board? Of Mr. Okay, anyone signed up to?
Yes, sir, Mr. Wes Rogers.
Mr. Rogers, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Wes Rogers, at one fifteen Loop Drive.
Okay.
Um, that's my house that shows on the plat.
You are the son-in-law, I guess?
Yes, I am. And, uh, my family owns the surrounding, the lake and everything. My house sits on the water. Um, my father, who passed away a couple years ago, originally recorded this plat. And it's separate zoning from across the street. Now, across the street from us is Lucas Estates. It's a subdivision zoning.
Okay.
It's AR two. This plat is recorded as AR one. And like he said before, that our, our intentions were based on, you know, selling the land with the AR one zoning and the hundred foot setback. Because the, well, you can't go back any further because of the lake, and my mom's not gonna cut off part of the lake. So, um, I just wanna say, I, you know, I live next door to him. My mom owns the rest of the land around us. Our neighbors, nobody has an objection to this. It's just, you know. The zoning is in place and we base it on the zoning that was recorded, and then we found out, you know, later on that it was a change. That, uh, and, they tried to tell us in our subdivision, when we built, built our house. Our, that we were part of Lucas Estates as well too, but we had enough acreage and it wasn't a setback far enough, it wasn't an issue. But we had to argue that we were not part of the covenant package, uh, that's acquired across the street. Now, our house would fit those m- measurements, but at the same time, you know, we didn't wanna be zoned in the, in with the subdivision. We're s- completely separate zoning.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright. Any question, Mr. Wes, from the, um. From the board? Okay, then I will entertain a.
Let me, let me clarify.
Question also? Yes.
Go ahead. Let me just clarify, was there any other speakers or?
Go ahead.
Clarify a few things. It is true that on this eastern part of the Loop Drive, they are not in that subdivision. Um, however, the zoning for that entire Loop Drive and a couple pieces of property across the. Way are AR two, not AR one, so yes, they're not in the subdivision, however, it's still the same zoning. Let me clarify too, that, uh, Mr. Ellington here, I do not consider at fault at all with this. This is extenuating circumstances from two years ago. Uh, but I think it's cleaner to get a variance for this and have that on the record. Rather than just ignoring the situation, so that's why we're here tonight on this. If you look at the same map we're looking at on the big screen as on our screens here. This is Mr. Ellington's three acres, and as he said, due to the nature of that lake cutting down like it does. And his relative being on the, the right side there. And Ms. Rogers' property and that drainage easement being on the other side, he's pretty much bound to what he has. It will, approving the variance or not, will not change where the house has to be located, which is pretty much, is right exactly where it is right now. So nothing will actually change, and it's not a detrimental effect to neighbors anywhere. So I, I do recommend approval of it, because this is one of those situations that is clearly not his fault. Um, but there again, we just don't have two more acres to make five acres, so.
But you said that it was zoned for AR two, which, which does carry a risk.
Entire Loop Drive is AR two, five acre minimums.
Oh, that is, it carries a five, not a three?
Correct.
Okay.
But there's nowhere to go to get two more acres here. He was told, uh, previous that it was, it was recorded as three. But I just wanna clean this up and have it on record that, yes, there was a variance for this, so.
If I might add, just, I, I think I'm correct on this, uh, based on this plat. Uh, the minimum requirement was like fifteen hundred feet for the house.
I have to go back and look, but I, I think you were good with all that when I looked at the permit.
Well, all I was gonna state was that we intend that the house that we've had drawn by the architect. Uh, will have three thousand square feet.
Oh, okay.
Of even space in the house, and it'd be more than that on the roof.
That's right.
Okay. Now, if you stated your case well enough there for staff, okay, then I will entertain a motion from the board. Uh, concerning, uh, variance twenty four dash seventeen V.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, uh, is that with the conditions here?
I don't think there were any conditions.
Did you erase all the conditions here? That, there's nothing that he needs to come back to you for after this, correct?
No, just lot should be subject to all AR two requirements. He already meets the rest of them.
Okay, then that's clean then, to, to say we approve it as is. Then you second that also?
I second the motion.
Okay, the, uh, we have a motion as second to approve, uh, variance twenty four dash seventeen V. All in favor, would you raise your right hand, please? Okay, it has passed. Mr. Ellington, you, you can.
Thank you.
I will, uh, finish processing your permit.
That's like having two Christmases.
It, it's very rare, sir, that a zoning person makes somebody happy and smile, so.
If, if you can get along with all the in-laws, you're in business.
My daughter, my two sons and a grandson, and, uh, my wife took, uh. Some illness yesterday and it followed through the night and she wasn't able to come. Um, but I appreciate all the help I've received out of the permit department. Ms. Ellington, uh, that's there, uh, and I, uh, we checked genealogy. I'm not too sure we're related. But I don't think so. And, uh, at one point in time, I was chairman of the planning and zoning for the city of McDonough. So, but this is the first time I've been at this part of the program.
Well, good luck to you.
Y'all very much.
Yeah, good luck to you. Okay, our next item on the agenda. Is various application number twenty four dash eighteen V. Shane Phillips, owner, one seventeen Glenview Drive, parcel two 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 zero zero three zero three six. Located in landlot twelve of the third land district. Requesting a reduction in a si- in a setback for an accessory building from twelve feet. To eight feet off the main house. Is, are you Mr. Phillips?
I'm Shane Phillips.
Okay, would you state your name and address?
Shane Phillips, one one seven Glenview Drive, Griffin, Georgia, three oh two two four.
Okay, state your case, please.
So I, um, I'm putting in a prefab metal carport. Um, in order to put it in, uh, on the left side of my house where the driveway is. I only have eight feet going from it to the side of the house instead of twelve that's coated. And I have the, I have five foot, four inches going from the other side to my property line. And, um, I bought a boat and my wife told me I could take it out of the garage and put it somewhere, so that's why I did this. She wants the garage back. He said that since it was bigger than ten by, uh, twenty, I think it is, or no?
Twelve.
Ten by twelve? It's, uh, actually twelve by twenty four. And it's gonna have, uh, I have forty six hundred pound of rock, um, there that's gonna be under it. And there's gonna be a little driveway to the, um, edge of the concrete. It's only about six or seven foot.
Okay, any questions from staff? Anyone signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion from staff.
Yeah, it's pretty cut and dry, uh, it's, accessory buildings have setbacks just like main buildings, uh. As he said, he only has the eight feet there. It's pretty tight on the side, so to make the other setback from the property line, he needs to have. Eight feet here instead of twelve, so I don't foresee any detriment to anybody.
Okay. So your recommendation to approval would?
Yes.
Okay. Then, uh, any questions to staff from the board? Then I will entertain a motion concerning twenty four dash eighteen V variance.
I will make a motion to approve.
And I accept.
Okay, we have, uh, we, uh, have a motion for approval of, uh, variance twenty four V dash eighteen. Twenty four dash eighteen V. Uh, all in favor of the motion to approve? Would you raise your right hand, please? It is approved?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and made my wife happy. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other business anyone has to bring before the board?
Have the, uh, minutes remaining from October tenth.
Okay, that's the next. Okay, then I will consider a motion to approve the minutes from our October tenth, twenty twenty four meeting. Make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, would you raise your right hand, please? Okay, how about a report from the director?
I don't have anything further tonight.
Okay. Any board member comments?
Believe it, motion to adjourn would be in order.
I think one would be in order. I don't, I don't think we have to approve in a second on that. I think that's automatic. I don't think so. Huh?
Proving a mo- motion to adjourn, is that be approved in a second?
We do?
Yeah.
We don't do that on B O E?
B O E?
Port of equal section.
Well, y'all are just, y'all are just different, Mr. Harvard.
They are, aren't they?
Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Okay, all in favor, would you raise your right hand, please? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.